There was an earlier time when I was. That time is past, and I'm gonna call it as I see it. In November, it will be 40 years that I've lived in Logan, Iowa. I grew up in a suburban community outside Chicago, Illinois. When I moved here and began my business career, I learned very quickly what an amazing community Logan is and remains. Over the ensuing years, I've seen so many great things being accomplished by this community. The junior senior high school building bond issue was passed in 1977 with a 72 percent plurality. Now, think about this for a minute. In a state that requires a 60 percent plurality to pass bond issue, this community passed one with 72 percent. At that time, there wasn't any other bond issue in the history of state of Iowa for a school bond issue that ever passed with a greater plurality than 72 percent, and it hasn't occurred since. Since then, we built a new elementary school on the same site, again, with over a 70 percent plurality. This community brought a doctor to town many years ago and built the Allegiant Health Clinic. With the generosity of Clinton and Charlie and Key as a catalyst, and the terrific leadership of our former mayor, Mike Fauch, and a positive and productive city council, this community came together once again and built this community center where we meet this very evening. Most recently, this community, along with the generosity of Jim Wood and the Wood Foundation, built a new state-of-the-art aquatic center that our young people and many adults benefit from even as we meet this evening. Again, the bond issue was passed with an overwhelming majority. I note these events because it demonstrates what a special place Logan, Iowa is. Logan is a place where the vast majority of us can be proud to be citizens. Now, we sit here this evening, having been dragged through a series of events over the past few months by three city council members, that I did not believe, even in my worst nightmare, could possibly happen in our community. And I've asked myself, as you have, why? Why has this happened in our town? It's a very simple answer, and we all know the answer to it. The root cause of this problem is because three city council members objected to the cleanup and the re-establishment of walking trails through a city park. Now, you can cut through all the minutia, all the smoke screens and everything like that, that's what it comes down to. Now, they'll sit there, and they will shake their heads, "No," they disagree, "Oh, that's not right." They'll tell the media, "That's not what they want." They'll even tell you and I that that's not what they want. But we all know that their opinions are much different than that. We have witnessed the career of a long-term, dedicated, and honorable city employee trashed, thrown away, like so much garbage, with no regard whatsoever to that person's past efforts, past employment history, or for what it might do to her and her family. All because, again, they objected to the establishment of some walking trails and the cleanup of Milliman Park, and because she dared to oppose and say, "I don't agree with you." Maybe she said some things in a couple of emails that shouldn't have been said. Those, ladies and gentlemen, we all know are not grounds for dismissal. We've also witnessed the efforts, the accomplishments, and the character of people like Matt Pitt, Nikki Allen, and Gary Nordby, individuals who volunteered to help make our community more attractive and more livable to potential citizens. They've been criticized, questioned, slandered, and besmirched. We've witnessed one of them being called a liar. They have been accused, in so many words, of meeting secretly, as if they're part of some super-secret cabal, the Park Board, trying to bypass and intentionally work against the wishes of the citizens of this community and the city council. All of this has happened and fulminated because they refused to listen to "we," the citizens of Logan, and have vehemently objected to something as innocuous as a walking path in a public park. They have determined that the citizens of this community don't have the right to walk upon a city-owned street or a city-owned public park in any proximity to a certain property owner who just happens to be one of our city councilmen. Why? Because they feel that, in my opinion, they have been granted some divine right to restrict the public's use of Milliman Park under the ruse of their right to privacy or the protection of family, as if the Boy Scouts, the Kiwanis Club members, and we, the residents of this community, are all potential terrorists, vandals, child molesters, and have the personal characteristics of Caligula. Truly, their confidence in the citizens of this community is inspiring. These three council members have reasoned that it's perfectly all right to permanently ruin the career of a dedicated 12-year city employee. It's perfectly all right to criticize the efforts and assassinate the very character of people who, again, have volunteered to improve the quality of life for the residents of our city. It's perfectly all right for them to ruin the reputation of this community that has taken generations to establish and build. It's perfectly all right to open this community up to a lawsuit that could potentially and rightfully cost this city hundreds of thousands of dollars. All of this is perfectly all right to their way of thinking, as long as it achieves their personal agenda objectives and fulfills the vendettas of certain individuals. Of course, it's easier to understand their thinking when you know that one of the spouse of one of the council persons has previously opined to a friend in California, and I quote, "I'm dealing with nincompoops and weirdos in my town." How dare you? How dare you do what you've done to these people and what you've done to this community? Now, I do not feel for one moment that I'm the only one sitting in this room tonight that sees the sheer absurdity and the wrongfulness of your actions or your vendettas. And I call for you, Councilman Johnson, and you, Councilman Lefebvre, and Councilman Clark, to resign honorably. You have lost the confidence of the citizens of this community, and you have the inability to serve this community effectively. To conclude...
(applause) Do you see the agreement? Did you both agree?
I just have two questions for Councilman Johnson and Councilman Lefebvre. Number one, was it worth it? Number two, was it really worth all of the harm that you have caused? Thank you, Mayor Feder, and thank you, Councilman Crum.
First of all, I want to go on record publicly saying that I will condemn anyone who is making threats to you, physical, emotional, to your families, or anything else.[542.16][542.16](applause) I believe being that, but I don't know, but I would go on record condemning it. I was in the military and was willing to fight for this country so that people like you have the right to be wronged.[560.29][560.29](laughter) I just wish you wouldn't exercise it so often.[564.16][564.16](laughter) Okay. I guess I'd like to start with asking Nick a question. You guys had a special meeting on July 6th. That agenda stated simply termination of the city clerk or administrator, termination of the city attorney. There was no discussion. Are you, because I've asked the mayor and I've asked Mr. Crum on the record, if they were aware or felt that there were grounds for termination? Are you aware, or do you feel, that there were grounds for termination of Angela Winter?
Yes, I do.
You are aware, and you do feel there were grounds?
Yes, I do.
Are you willing to share any of those grounds with us at this time?
I would like to speak with an attorney before I talk, because I don't want to say anything that's...
Fair enough. I would like to know how you became aware of the grounds for termination of Angela Winter.
How I became aware?
Yes. It's not a trick question. Because there was no discussion, there was no closed session, there was no... So how did you become aware? At some point, you had to, you are aware of the grounds. At some point, you had to become aware of that knowledge. When did that happen? How did that happen?
Since I was on the council, from January.
Well, but how were you, how specifically did you gain the knowledge of the grounds that you feel resulted in the termination of Angela Winter?
Being on the council and being at meetings and seeing the ongoing...
So you felt that you saw grounds for termination during meetings?
You're being a really bad role model with your kids.
Is that weird?
Let Jim speak, please.
I'm just looking to clarify how this all happened. I just want to know...
As I stated earlier, I cannot wait until we have an attorney so that light can be shed on this situation.
Also, I'm asking you...
Because there's a lot of questions that are coming up that I don't know if I should answer, because I don't want to get anyone in trouble.[720.01][720.01](laughter)
The city.
So you're saying, you're saying you cannot answer on grounds that that question may incriminate you?
No.
May incriminate somebody else?[734.23][734.23](laughter) Okay. I don't know what to, at this point. I'd like to ask about, since some information has been put out at Fox 42 News, however...
I wish I knew how that got out.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't matter, but I'm gonna use that information and just confirm it in. Okay? One of the things they cited was that they had bills from the city to the attorney that amounted to thousands of dollars. Was that an accurate statement, that Angela ran up bills for the city that amounted to thousands of dollars?
Again, I'm not sure what they were referencing. We have bills, they're reviewed every week here, they're public, anybody can have them. This is the information that's gonna come, that's free information. I think a couple people here requested that.
Correct.
It's free, we look at it every week.
Okay.
It's the bills from the attorney.
So are you saying that statement, yes, I'm referring to the attorney, bills for the city of Logan?
I have not added them up. I would guess...
Well, do you, okay. Is the amount of money that was ran up by Angela with the city attorney part of the grounds for her termination?
I'm not gonna comment on that at this point.
Okay, so will you comment on whether what Fox 42 News said was factual or not? That she had ran up thousands of dollars in attorney's fees?
I want to know what they were looking at.
Okay. Just, just so you know, the city fees year-to-date are less than $2,500, 400 of which you got billed for contacting the attorney about firing Angela. So just as a comparison, I put in a court request for information for the city of Underwood, which I did yesterday and I have today.[856.63][856.63](laughter) In 2007, they had, their attorney bills out a couple times a year, just for the entire, like, six-month period. 2007, one billing was over $7,000, another was over $6,000. In 2008, one billing was over $5,600, another one was over $4,800. In 2009, there was one billing for running $6,000. In 2010, there was one billing for almost $13,000, and in 2012, they spent $16,000. Do those sound like, I mean, we're nowhere in that ballpark over the last few years, are we? Is that, is that out of line for a city? I'm just, I'm just looking for clarification. Okay. Well, I mean, I did speak to you.
Oh, I said, I'm sorry. I said I couldn't speak to Underwood. I don't know what they got going on to have the bill fluctuate like that.
(laughter) Thank you for having any response. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Agenda item number 20 is Brittany. Who's doing that?
I did it.
Please do not reply that again. Agenda item number 20 is Brittany Norby, discuss an improved survey on the north or south side of Third Street. Would you like to come forward, please?
Okay, the survey company has availability within the next few weeks to do the survey, and the Park Board would just like to move forward to complete the survey, so we just want to know what side of 3rd Street he wants the survey on, the north or south side.
Survey the park?
Yes.
Do you have the information on the survey? Who's doing that? Do you have that data? Do you have 22?
Do we have the information?
Who's doing the survey? Who's doing the survey?
We have the donations to do the survey. People have donated their money, so we'd like to move forward.
We gave that information also to Angela.
That Angela should have, I don't know what's on property.
We just need approval to approve it on the south and north side. I have a map.
What difference does one side of the street have?
Yeah.
That's what we're asking. Thanks to you guys, please. I'd like the surveys to go.
Can you throw a microphone up there so we can hear what's going on?
They're just, they're asking which side of the street...
We'd like to know them.
Okay. Now, this...
You want to figure that out?
Survey the property.
Property lines would have to be on the south side of Third Street.
Survey the center of the street.
The Park Boards want to know whether we want to go on the park side or the citizen side of the streets to find out where the park is and where the citizens are. My recommendations is just to go to the park side. That way, we know where the park is, and that way, we're not being involved in another lawsuit.
The city owns both the park and the streets, so if the citizen's side, you clarify where you need to be.
Yeah, it could, the street should be on record how wide the street is, so whichever side you do end up measuring, you're gonna know that if there was a 30-feet, 30-foot street in there, that if you got the park boundary, you would have 30 feet would be the citizen side.
Randy, wasn't the whole point is determine where the property lines are so that we know where, whether or not we're getting on private property? So if we understand where the property lines are, we can go from that and then be able to know where the street is on the north side as well.
I mean, it probably would be better so everybody knows exactly where they're...
I'm up for either side.
Randy, I'm just saying, I'm up for either side.
Do we know where the street is?
The actual street?
Yeah.
No.
We don't know where the street is.
That's, that's what the survey would show, is where the edge of the street is.
Because it's mowed, although the Third Street is mowed, and then you get into the, it's got fences on both sides of it.
But we're not sure if that's actually where the street's at or not. There's a couple other streets in town that don't line up with where they're supposed to be, so that's why this was...
Were you surveying that one then, too, from my yard?
It was there before the city, I mean, the city knew where it was before they abandoned it, so how do we not know where it is now?
I don't know if there's ever been pits put in place or something.
The main reason I wanted to survey is because years ago, when this was put in, people went by, "The old oak tree is your property line, to my, you know, stump here is the property line." Well, the old oak tree fell down and things happened, and so I'd like to have a survey so I know exactly where the city's property is, so we can go ahead with these trails and get them done, so we can move on with other things. So that's why I want the survey. We need to know where things are so we can proceed legally, so we can not have any more So either side of the street or whatever is...
We do, we do it two jobs, one by doing the citizen's side.
Is it Third Street, or is it the road that goes north and south up there, too?
I thought we was gonna survey that part, too.
This is...
What? Is that a different named street?
I don't know if that's named up there or not, or Third just goes all the way in there and then turns into Lynn Street after it goes across.
Yeah, see, I don't really...
Does the survey go clear around the Fourth Street?
But I believe the way, yeah, I think so. When it first started, that's what we were looking at, was to get all the property lines down through there correct, so that then that would be all the way around the park.
If we know all the property lines on the residential side of that street, wouldn't we know what we need to know?
Yes, I believe so.
So, just the property side?
Citizen's side?
I made a motion that the Park Board go ahead and survey to the, from the citizen's side, so that way we know where the street is.
Okay, this is for the Nolan Park?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so like, see who's performing that.
Okay, yeah, Gary, can you just do that just again?
If you can find that.
We'll get it tomorrow. He's asked who the survey company is, so we'll get that tomorrow, and I can go to everybody and make sure that it applies and stuff. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Any other questions? I have a motion and a second to survey the edge of Nolan Park on the citizen's side. Councilmember Lefebvre.
Hi.
Councilmember Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Crum.
Hi.
Agenda item number 21, citizens' questions and comments.
I got one.
Gary.
I'll just speak from here. We have employees that were terminated that have been here for years and years. We had a regular scheduled meeting for Monday, and we have an emergency meeting, basically secretly called, they thought, for Friday. What was the emergency from Friday to Monday that needed to terminate these people over a weekend? Particularly with the time of the year that we have, these people in very need of finishing all the city business we have. What was the reason for a two-day emergency meeting?
Well, who wrote it, because it's going with the process?
Is there an answer for that?
They don't answer during this time?
No, I'm not. Okay. That's your, that's your problem.
Marshall.
I just want to say, I totally condone anyone who's threatened you or been mean to. That's, that's not what we're about. But I also have friends that are on park boards and pool boards in small towns in other states, and they're in awe that this turmoil in our city started over walking trails in an existing park. I mean, they cannot believe that's what started all this turmoil.[1571.32][1571.32](applause)
Well, the White Fort's in 25 Jones Circle, are you doing that tonight? This is for all of you, and I know a couple of them are probably giving Angela... I would like to ask for the resignation of Lee Clark. She's not here, so I can't make it to her face. She was at the restaurant today. I walk around the store all day, so you'll pick up there. And Mr. Johnson, you could probably address what her health condition is, because you were there till about 10 after 6:00 tonight.
Yeah, she picked up my binder for me. That was the first time I've seen that, so I picked it up. She left it in her car unlocked, and I did not go in. She didn't want to see anybody because of her, how bad she was feeling. I felt lost in that way.
Yeah, I don't know. But can we get some kind of action taken? She's not coming to afternoon meetings right now, and for no good reason. Can we get that on the agenda to request her resignation for the next meeting?[1645.32][1645.32](applause)
Jim?
I know you guys don't want to answer questions, so I'm gonna throw a couple questions out there that maybe you'll talk to an attorney and be prepared for the next meeting. One, I want to know if Angela Winter has been given her written notice yet, because according to the motion you made in the July 6th meeting, her two-week severance does not start until after she's received that written notice. So the fact that we're paying somebody who's not there kind of concerns me. I mean, that's according to your motion, two weeks after written notice. So I kind of want to know about that. I'd like to know, if I'm wrong in what I'm saying, please clarify. My understanding is that the reason for her termination is contained within the emails. Am I, if I'm wrong, please clarify.
You did that along the same, same line, the same type of personnel?
My understanding is the reason for her termination is in the emails. I find, I would like to know the date that you received her emails. Actually, I know that date, but I want you to answer that. And then I also find it interesting that when you get the bills from the city, from the city attorney, that you consulted the city attorney on her dismissal prior to receiving those emails. So I'd like an explanation for that next time.
Patty O'Neil, I'm sorry. Don't hear the, you know, you hear half of it to see, you hear none of it. But I happen to be here today, the street talk had it, that Mr. Lefebvre told Asher Poole over the weekend that Angela was mailed a letter, and you know the reason by today.
She got the letter, I've got a copy of it.
That's good, but should we be telling those things?
On the street, at the pool.
On the street, or hearing on street talk? When they won't answer a question in a meeting? I don't think so. But take a nap, and then you can go.[1792.32][1792.32](laughter) (applause)
Brenna?
I guess I would like your clarification to why you guys went outside the scope of the law in her termination. I understand you cannot tell us why she was terminated, but you can cover your butts and tell us why you guys were unlawful the way you did it.
I did nothing unlawful in that regard, so I don't know how...
Do you not do, Bummer? Do you not read the laws? Wow, I like how smug you look. Good luck on you.
Susie Bonham.
Susie Bonham, 1010 Skyline Drive. You know, I'm worried if we're going to get this survey, are the citizens that living around there, are going to rip out the survey markers like they do the flag? Or family members do it?
Uh, yes, sir.
Chris Ross, I just have one question. You won't answer any questions. If you fired her the right way, why in the heck can't you tell us without going to an attorney? Oh, I've got to seek legal advice. If you did it right, you can tell us.
Terry Francis, 509 North Second Avenue. Councilman LaFever and Councilman Johnson, do you actually think after the transactions of the last month that you can actually effectively govern in your position with absolutely zero support of this town? And if so, I don't know how. And I would call for both of your resignations immediately for lack of support from the city. Thank you.
I was doing what up when the bill didn't include us. So thanks, Terry.
We're serious.
I'm serious. You should have...
It's not a laughing matter. Hey, I realize that. You can hit the gap before him, huh?
He's out of order.
Pardon?
Yes, sir.
Will you just stand up and have a pair resign? I mean, you've definitely got 200-plus people because they can't make it, but you run or you participate in a big corporation and you can stand up for them. Why can't you just stand up for yourself and resign if you don't? Everybody can move on if you two would just stand up and resign. If you don't want to resign, then counter them.
Enjoy your time. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number 22. Chamber representative, the council. Is there a chamber representative here?
You know, go ahead. I think he's already talked about August 25th. I think we're, that's the only update we had.
It's from 1:04. Cruz is at 4. We're going to have vendors and that team is sponsored, so it'll be people come around town meeting with vendors. We're looking for a pretty good crowd, so I think we're going to be parking along the, in the park and on Clark Avenue. And if you have a cool car or motorcycle and you want to participate, we highly encourage you to do it. And I, on a personal note, feel like lots of times I'm Logan's biggest cheerleader, so come out and do something fun and put all this energy into some good use. So let's do something together that's a lot more important.
Agenda item number 23, for the administrative comments.
The Logan Harold Observer has requested to receive in writing all future city council agendas, both regular and special meetings, within 24 hours of the actual meeting date and time. They would also request agendas for all other city committees, boards, and other entities with the same time consideration. So park board, pool board, everybody needs to let them know. The Iowa DNR has received a grant from the U.S. Forest Service to complete 15 community pre-inventories in the southwest Iowa district, and Logan has been chosen as one of those communities. There will be a representative here on August 4 to begin taking inventory of all the city-managed trees, or trees in the right of way. So if you see somebody looking at them, it's the DNR. And Logan City Hall will be open from 9 to 12, and then from 1 to 4 this coming Friday, the 27th.
If you have any other requests for that, the same information that the paper requested, because we learned in that training that others could have stopped that if you got any...
Okay, thank you.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion, second. George Jur, Councilmember LaFever.
Hi.
Councilmember Johnson.
Hi.
Tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.